All right. Good evening, everyone. This is Tuesday, March 1st. I'm sorry. We've had this meeting rescheduled a couple of times. I've lost track of what the dates are. This is our public meeting on school start time. We're going to have a presentation on school start time. We will then allow members of the public that are here to ask any questions or make any comments that they wish to make. And following that presentation at 7:30 or as soon as possible thereafter, we will be starting our regular board meeting. So with that, I'll turn the program over to the School Start Time Committee.
Okay. Well, hello, everyone. I'm Deirdre Del Bear. I'm one member of the School Start Committee. And I should say, we should probably all identify ourselves so you know who this group is that's been working so diligently over the last year and a half on these questions. So do you guys want to introduce yourselves?
Chairwoman.
Diane Lyons.
Laura Scholken.
Tom Burnout.
Joe Phelan.
Mark Blaischauer.
And I'm Rick Walker.
So thank you for being here tonight. We are revisiting some of the same material that we presented last, was it in December? When we had our previous forum. And we're particularly eager to share with you some thoughts and changes we've made to the proposal based on the feedback we received from parents, both in this setting, but also through the survey that was administered through Survey Monkey and through other kinds of communications that came to us on the board, emails that were sent to us. And we've really gathered a lot of extremely helpful input from members of the community, students, teachers, parents, families. So why are we proposing a potential change in terms of school start time? Why are we exploring this issue and why are we exploring it now? We mentioned, for those of you who may have been part of this conversation in the past, that this isn't the first time that we've talked about looking at the school start time. Roughly 10 years ago, this conversation arose. And actually, since the '90s or the turn of the century, people have been asking questions about whether school start time actually is synced appropriately to the sleep cycles of particularly teenagers. There have been many school districts across the country that have adopted later school start times. And we will talk a little bit about some of the evidence from the experience of those schools in a moment. So over the last decade, the medical and the scientific communities have become increasingly aware and I would argue fairly vocal and unequivocal in making recommendations about what the National Sleep Foundation has described as a chronic health problem, sleep deprivation among adolescents. I'll quote you from at least one take on this research. While long seen as a cultural and psychosocial preference, i.e., kids just like to stay up later, later bedtimes among adolescents are now understood to actually be a biological response to puberty. According to a 2010 report in the Archive of Pediatrics and Adolescent Medicine, the onset of puberty results in adolescents developing as much as a two-hour sleep-wake phase delay relative to the sleep-wake cycles in middle childhood. So this begins to kick in, as we have learned, roughly in the middle school years. We start to see this transitional problem with children around grade seven, grade eight. And that is also coinciding with the moment when in our district, kids are being asked to go to school earlier than they were previously. The delayed sleep cycle appears to be due to endocrine rhythms, which are even observed in adolescents receiving sufficient sleep. These changes in sleep cycles, which have to do with the release of melatonin and -- hi, welcome. -- have been observed in over 16 countries on six continents. And this is ranging across a range of different cultures, right? From very busy kind of modern post-industrial cultures to pre-industrial cultures, confirming that the timing of sleep is delayed during adolescence. So the research is out there. There's a preponderance of research, particularly pediatric research, about the effects on children moving into adolescence of this sleep phase delay. And this research has actually informed a recommendation that was made by the American Academy of Pediatrics in 2014. And honestly, this is one of the major sort of benchmarks for us in terms of our thinking. We respect this as a professional association of medical researchers, and we think it's worth taking seriously the recommendation they put forward, which is that schools should consider aligning their schedules to the biological sleep rhythms of adolescents, whose sleep-wake cycles begin to shift up to two hours later at the start of puberty. Furthermore, this past summer, the Centers for Disease Control also declared insufficient sleep for adolescents to be a public health concern. They've also pointed to adopting later school start times as the most obvious and generally cost-neutral way to begin to address that. Depending on how you make that shift, of course, the cost can be greater or lesser. We've been governed by the need to be cost-neutral. One of the questions that many people have raised, and it's a good question, is if we have this two-hour sleep delay, aren't we really looking at a scenario where we need to have the school start time be much, much later? We are working within strict parameters, parameters that were set for us by our Board of Education. Remaining cost-neutral is absolutely crucial. As if you stick around and listen to the rest of our meeting, you'll learn more about exactly the kind of pressures we're under to keep our budget under control and not to increase any kind of expenditure around a policy like this. So the 30-minute delay, which is one we have been exploring and we will be talking about tonight, is still correlated with measurable improvement in student health, significant improvement in measures of adolescent alertness, mood, and health, according to scientists who have studied schools that have made this slighter change, 30-minute change. And in one study in particular, this is a kind of a hallmark study, it's cited a lot in the literature, pediatric researchers found that after this 30-minute shift in school start time, sleep duration increased by 45 minutes and average bedtime advanced by 18 minutes. The percentage of students who are getting less than seven hours of sleep decreased by 79.4 percent. And those reporting at least eight hours of sleep increased from 16.4 percent to 54.7 percent. Those are pretty promising indicators. And it's this kind of research that is informing our sort of desire to follow through on even this shorter school delay. We think that there's enough measurable benefit to make it worth exploring. Following up in that same study, students reported significantly more satisfaction with sleep and improved motivation. Daytime sleepiness, fatigue, and depressed mood were all reduced. The phenomenon of seeing a kid with a hat on the desk, you know, actually not able to focus or concentrate particularly in those early morning periods. Most health-related variables, including health center visits for fatigue-related complaints and class attendance, were also improved. And I just want to add to that, we don't have a slide for it, but a correlating set of findings from the American Psychological Association, published in 2014, pointed to benefits that have been observed with later school start times, including increased attendance rate, decrease in disciplinary action, increase in assessment scores, although I don't know that that's necessarily going to guide us in terms of our metrics, increase in student attention, decrease in students sleeping during instruction, we definitely would not want to see that happening, and increase in quality of student-family interaction. So that's from the American Psychological Association, which also concurs with these other professional associations in suggesting that changing school start time is a clear step forward in terms of addressing this public health concern. Okay, so what were our parameters right here in Rhinebeck? What did we consider as non-negotiable in exploring options for changing or potentially thinking about changing school start time? Any recommendation had to be cost-neutral. So for those of you who may have attended some of our meetings earlier, we had a whole array of possible scenarios, but we really were given very clear instructions by our colleagues that we had to look at only those that were cost-neutral. Second, maintain all extra and co-curricular programs for all students in our Chancellor, at Buckley Middle School, and in Rhinebeck High School. That's very important. It's one of the most robust parts of our school program and after-school program. We don't want to harm any of that. And finally, that this would be a pilot, that any recommendation that would come forward would be for one year, and that we would need to assess the effects throughout the year, both things that we could anticipate and project that we would attempt to measure, but also things that we could not foresee, right? We are completely aware that there will be things that may occur around any pilot program that would have to be studied and assessed. We want to make one point really, really clear. And this grows out of a lot of our conversations amongst ourselves as people who live in this community, who have, most of us, have kids in the schools or have had kids in this school, and who've had to deal with all of the pressures of juggling work and school and after-school life and the many things we all do. We're very, very busy in our families today. And the recommendation of this subcommittee is motivated by our sense of concern for the health and wellness of all our students in this district. So while we're aware that there are many kids who manage successfully to get up early and make it to the bus and handle the workload that gets increasingly challenging as they move from middle school into the high school, we recognize that. We know kids who have done well with it. Our own kids may do well with it. But really, part of what motivates us as a Board of Education is the success, the health, and the wellness of all our students. And certainly, the research indicates that not all children adapt equally well to that shift towards earlier school start times as they go into adolescence. So while some may have adapted, maybe even the majority of students have adapted in some ways to the current start time, not all students are able to do so. And we're concerned about those students who struggle. How can we do a better job of supporting all our students and particularly the students who are struggling and failing to get enough sleep? Finally, we just want to point out again the range of the kind of information we gathered, the people we spoke to as we developed this proposal. First of all, we reviewed the bell schedule for all schools in Dutchess and Elstra County. There is interesting variance across districts in these two counties, and we learned from the experience of those school districts. You'll see how in a moment. We reviewed the before and after-school club participation at all three schools. And actually, that was a wonderful thing for us to see, how many, many, many of our students take advantage of those programs. We reviewed athletic participation, grades seven through 12, and consulted with Mr. Boucher about those numbers. We surveyed parents, teachers, and students regarding their attitudes towards a later start time. And as you probably all are aware, we did that more than once. So some people said, "Why are you surveying us again?" Because we came back sort of after a series of conversations to see where people are at a second time. We hosted coffee with the board sessions to discuss parent and student opinion. And I'm very happy to say that a few young people came out to those conversations. I see one here again tonight. And we really appreciate the effort that people made to come to those early morning or those evening sessions to talk with us. We met with teachers from all three schools to discuss the logistics of a later start time. And we continue to circle back to those people with fine tuning in terms of timing of all of this. We met with the principals of all three schools on numerous occasions to discuss the logistics of a later start time, and we continue to work closely with them. We gathered feedback from the business office, the Health and Wellness Committee, the Athletic Director, the Guidance Office, and the BLPTs. We hosted public presentations outlining at least initially the five options we were considering. We gathered additional feedback from that first session. And actually, really interestingly, the School Start Time Committee participated in a webinar that was hosted by another New York State school, Glens Falls City School District, where they spoke about the multi-year process of working towards consensus on changing their school start time. And they shared what they learned from the experience, which is extremely helpful to us. Okay, so I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Bell.
Which is the advanced button? Is it there? Okay, great. So at the risk of taking too much time to repeat what we presented publicly and is on our website from December's meeting and presentation, we did consider five options. And I'm not going to go into the detail of all these options, just the option that the committee is recommending to the full board. We looked at the option of single-tripping all students K-12, in other words, having enough buses to mix K-12 students on the same bus and start both schools at approximately the same time. We looked at an option whereby we might flip-flop CLS start time with BMS/ RHS start time, start the elementary school earlier, and start the high school/middle school later. That was an option we looked at. Similar to that, we looked at alternating the times between the two buildings and shifting the times some. We looked at shifting the middle school/high school by 30 minutes and the elementary school by approximately five minutes. And we also considered the option of maintaining the status quo and not changing anything. And ultimately, after all of the research, both the review of the national research as well as the extensive amount of information gathering from school districts in our state and in our region, the committee decided to present the fourth option up there to the full board for their consideration. The one clear proposal that we felt best supported student wellness and addressed various concerns, including avoiding additional costs, the current, well, the proposal that we're making to the full board does not involve additional costs. Most of the other options, except for maintaining the status quo, did result in some additional costs. And also, our ability to shift the start time in the middle school/high school to 30 minutes later with minimal impact on the start and end times at our elementary school and be able to maintain all before and after-school programs, including interscholastic athletics. So as I mentioned a few moments ago, we would plan to start the middle school/high school 30 minutes later than it starts currently and to shift the end time at Chancellor to five minutes later. I'll get into the details here shortly. Focusing first on the middle school/high school, the display up there includes the current bell schedules and the proposed bell schedules. So you can see, we would be moving, if the board were to approve this recommendation, we'd be moving from a 7:30 a.m. first-period start to an 8 o'clock first-period start. And we would be ending less than 30 minutes later than we currently end. Currently, ninth period ends at 2:16, and under the proposed bell schedule, we would be ending ninth period at 2:35. So where did we pick up the extra time? Well, this schedule proposes, instead of having four minutes passing time at the middle school/high school, to go to three minutes passing time. We found out through some of our research that a number of schools, high schools and middle schools in Dutchess County seem to do quite well with three-minute passing times. So we thought that would be an appropriate way to recapture approximately seven or eight minutes of time at the end of the day. One of the periods, I think it's third period, is a little longer than the others by several minutes, so we shaved some of the time off that period. So although we're starting a half an hour, we would be starting a half an hour later, we would be ending not at 2:16 p.m., but at 2:35 p.m., which somewhat lessens the impact on our various after-school programs for middle school and high school. There are some other factors that come into play here. I'll try to highlight a few of them. Currently, our middle school/high school students are allowed to enter the building as early as 6:45 a.m. That would shift to 7:15 a.m. I mentioned the passing times between classes. Our morning bus to the Career and Technical Institute, our BOSI Center, would not change in the morning, would not change midday, would not change coming back, and would not change in the afternoon. They would run on exactly the same schedule they run on currently. After-school clubs and homework help would go from 2:30 to 3:10, to 2:40 to 3:20. So we don't anticipate losing any time there. The after-school bus currently leaves for Chancellor at 3:15. That would leave 10 minutes later. Our athletic buses currently leave between 2:30 and 3 o'clock. And under this proposed schedule, we would need our athletic buses to leave by 3:00. We anticipate less downtime for athletes as they wait for their buses to go to away games. We currently have a merged football program with Pine Plains. This year, that bus left at 2:30. The bus will leave at 2:40 under this proposal. So what we see as the potential upsides, should the board adopt this proposal for a pilot this coming year, is that students would have the opportunity for more sleep and time to eat a healthy breakfast either at home or in school. Our morning BOSI students would benefit from four academic periods here. Currently, they only get three. Fifth-period lunch would begin at 11 rather than 10:30. Seems to make a little more sense in terms of lunchtime starts. There'd be little or no change to our before and after-school co-curricular programs. And our athletic director, who was, I will admit, somewhat skeptical at first, feels that this particular proposal would have little impact on the interscholastic athletic schedule. He told us, quote, "This is eminently doable in terms of that particular program after Okay, at Chancellor. Currently, students are allowed to enter the building at 8:45. We would maintain that 8:45, enter the building schedule in deference to some of the comments that we received from parents regarding a change in the start, the potential change in the start of the start time at Chancellor and their ability to get their kids to school and get themselves to work. So that would not change. School itself would start, the actual start of class as a Chancellor, would begin five minutes later than it does currently, 9 a.m. instead of 8:55. And as you can see, the end-of-school schedule would be pushed back approximately five minutes. So instead of having the buses pull out of Chancellor at or slightly before 3:30 p.m., we anticipate that they would be pulling out of Chancellor at or slightly before 3:35 So the upsides, parents would continue to drop their CLS students off at 8:45 a.m. The impact on the elementary school start and end times is only five minutes at the most. There'd be little or no change to the Chancellor before and after-school programs. Okay, Deirdre mentioned earlier that we've done two surveys thus far. The survey in November was a more extensive survey. At that point, we hadn't narrowed the options down to one recommendation. We were looking at the five options that I outlined to you briefly a little earlier this evening. The January 2016 survey, for those of you who took it, was a very brief, one-question survey with the option to leave specific comments. But we thought it would be instructive to take a look, even though the surveys themselves were different, to take a look at kind of some before and after responses. And in terms of parents, we had a greater response to November survey, 66 percent in favor of later school start time, were supporting the idea, 21 percent no, and 13 percent undecided. In January, after we'd actually put out a specific proposal for such a change, response was a little lower, 299. Yes responses were up to about 72 percent, no's up a little bit to 23, almost 24 percent, and undecided's down to 4 percent. That same data for our teachers, now these are elementary and secondary teachers. The initial response, 65 respondents, positive 31 percent, negative 42 percent, undecided 28 percent. In January, total response, fewer, more yeses, almost 60 percent, fewer no's, 26 percent, and fewer undecideds, 14 percent. Student survey, some interesting data here. The initial survey, 507 responses. And I would hasten to let you know that every student in our secondary took this survey. We did it actually, we took some class time to get initial data baseline from our middle school and our high school students. And you can see those numbers at 66 percent yes, 27 percent no, 6 percent undecided. In January, when we surveyed the single question about the proposal that we made to the Board of Education, total response is down. We did not take class time a second time to have students complete the survey. So students were on their own to decide to participate or not, and those numbers are quite a bit changed from the initial survey. And this is kind of the recap of our most recent surveying, just so you can see all three survey groups and how they responded to the survey question about whether they, did they support the proposal for change to the school start time next year, as we had outlined and as I had outlined to you a little earlier this evening. So the question that you might have at this point is, if the board votes affirmatively to pilot the option that I outlined to you earlier this evening, how will we assess the results of those changes? And we plan to collect data, both quantitative and qualitative data, before the end of this school year and probably, more importantly, as we implement this come September. September. We would, we plan to develop, with the help of people who actually do this kind of thing for a living, to develop survey instruments to assess students' quote-unquote "sleepiness" both this spring and then again in December as kind of a post, pre-post model. We would meet with our support staff during the course of the year to assess their perceptions of the effects, if any, on student behavior. We would do the same, working with teachers, to assess through them their perception of our students' level of alertness in the morning. We would review the, we will review the academic achievement of various student subgroups. Although I want to reinforce a comment that Deirdre made earlier in the presentation, and that is that while we certainly are concerned about and interested in any impact, positive or negative, on student achievement, our primary goal in doing this is not to increase student achievement so much as to increase the health and wellness of our students. You know, we'd like to believe that a healthier and better-adjusted student body may show some residual gains in terms of student achievement, but this is, this is not a plan to ramp up the test scores. That's not why we're doing this. We'll also review data on things like increases or decreases in student tardiness and absentee rates, increases and or decreases in student disciplinary referrals, increases and/or decreases in visits to the nurse's office with complaints related to tiredness or fatigue. We'll also survey parents yet again to find out from them their perceptions of the effects of a later start time from their vantage point at home. So the next steps. The Board will be meeting two weeks from tonight, March 15. That's a special meeting, it's not on the calendar currently. We'll be swapping out our March 8 meeting for this meeting on March 15. And one of the items on the agenda for that evening will be a Board vote to either adopt or reject the recommendation of the School Start Time Committee for a one-year pilot of an 8 AM start time at the middle school, high school, and a 9 AM start time at Chancellor. If the Board does approve that recommendation, we will assess and evaluate the impact of that plan once we do, if we do implement it starting this fall. And we'll be looking especially carefully for any unintended consequences that we may not have anticipated. It's always a possibility. We think we have covered the waterfront pretty well, but you never know until you run it out there. So our plan would be to run out there in the field and see how things work. And to determine whether, if there are consequences, whether they have a negative impact or no measurable benefit on our overall program and/or the health and wellness of our students before making a recommendation to, you know, to change this in some way, go back to what we were doing currently, or maintain this pilot for a longer period of time going forward. And then we anticipate around this time next year, roughly March of 2017, we'll review all the pilot year data that we've collected prior to returning to the Board of Education with this issue, with the data, and with a recommendation as to whether we should continue or not. So at this point, I'll turn the meeting over to our Board President. Thank you for being here and for being so attentive.
All right, thank you. So at this point, we'll turn it over to public comment, or we'll give you an opportunity to ask questions. Would like to ask that you keep your comments or questions to five minutes or less. If you do have a question or comment, we'd appreciate it if you would state your name and where you live, and then give everyone else a chance before you ask to make a second comment. So with that, if you'd raise your hand, I'll call on you, and we'd appreciate it if you would come up and speak into the microphone so that people who watched the recorded meeting can hear what you have to say.
I'm a seventh grader at Buckley. I live in Reinbeck. And, well, first off, I'm really, really, really for this, for the change, because of how much having to get up early and not being able to have sufficient breakfast and being tired all day, and it's all just affected me a lot, and it's made middle school very hard, and it's made the work seem like a lot more work than it is. I feel like the whole thing is, it just makes so much sense. Health-wise, it will make kids feel better during the day. I mean, I wake up and I, you know, I'm grumpy, I don't feel good. I get to school and everything seems like it's being thrown at me because it's so much, and I'm a good student, but it may not seem to affect my grades, but I don't know what I could be doing if I didn't have this stress in the morning, if I didn't have all of this early morning. And I feel like 30 minutes would do so much to help. And I feel like a lot of kids who may be disagreeing with this, they don't know, they're not maybe realizing what's actually happening and what, what health problems might be being caused, what, what grades could be doing, they might not know, and a lot of kids just sort of don't, or weren't paying attention. I know one of the, the second survey where kids weren't doing it during class, I actually personally didn't get a chance to do that survey because I don't check my school email. It's not, I don't have that, I don't always go on to there, I'm not required to do so. And I didn't get a chance to take part in that survey. And I think a lot of kids who would share my opinion might also not have gotten a chance to take that survey. And I think that it's important that you keep that in mind because the statistics were very different, but I feel like a lot of people might have, might have stated their opinions if we had them do that in class. But I just feel like it would be really, really good for the health, for the mind, everything. Just makes sense. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
My name is Floyd Bird. I live in Reinbeck. And I just want to say that I, this is my first, well, this is my second time attending meetings. I want to commend the job that you guys have done with the research, the diligence, the hard, it's a hard act to, a hard thing to try to make change in an old community that has been around forever and is used to doing things a certain way. And I just wanted to commend your job and what you guys have done to try to make this happen. I'm personally for it. I think it will benefit all of our children. I think it may be a little difficult for people that have full-time jobs, but I think that they can, if, if school were always to start at 9, they would have had to deal with that. So in my mind, if we can improve our children's health and well-being, it's the best thing we can do as a parent. And I just wanted to say thank you, because I think you guys have done a great job.
My name is Ally Delius. I live in Lincoln Corners. And again, to repeat, I think it's a wealth of information you've presented over and over again, and, excuse me, having the information online for people who couldn't attend the meetings, I do feel like I was connected through each step of the way, so I do appreciate that. There were two questions I still had. You know, in one of the previous meetings, someone brought up the issues of the busing and whether that's really been looked at to see if the shift in busing is going to be able to be carried over to the next year, being that so many things have to get ironed out for this year. I know that's going to be a big concern for the Buckley parents, as well as the Chancellor parents. But I do feel that if the bus issues were taken care of, that's a big amount of time as well at the middle school, preschool, students could be spending sleeping. And I know we personally had a shift of about a half hour this year, so when you start to talk about shifting another half hour, I do think that it is a big deal for a middle schooler. But will the busing impact, you know, this attempt to really promote health? If it's not going to work out, then they're still not able to make the most effective use of that time in the morning. The second question I had was that in the January survey, there were still a lot of teachers who were opposed or undecided, and I was wondering if there was any comments that were made and whether there was a clear connection with some of the comments from the teachers or even from the public as to still now, with all the information that's been presented and all the recommendations that have been made, is there still a underlying concern that a certain group of teachers are having that could, you know, could be addressed? I know there's always going to be opposition, but if there was something intended before, then...
Can we take a crack at, I'll try to answer both of your questions, and you guys can jump in and throw me a line if I... Good questions, thank you for asking them. I'll start with the second one first, and I'll do so at the risk of trying to take opinions from middle school and high school and elementary school teachers and making a generalization, because that's, the only way I can answer your question is to generalize. It's, in my opinion, the questions and concern, the majority of the questions and concerns from the teaching staff that are more negative and less positive are from some of our elementary school teachers. Again, I'm not, that's no state secret that I'm sharing. More of them had questions and concerns, and some of them probably still do. Some of the concerns centered around the fact that the proposal is a five-minute shift. Now, it may not seem, five minutes may not seem a lot to some people, but obviously for some of the teachers at Chancellor, that five minutes at the beginning of the day was something that was, that was a concern to them. And I'm not saying that to minimize their concern, just that that was a concern, because when you look at the whole day impact at Chancellor, really the significant impact is kids come in at 8:45 like they have been, but the school day doesn't start until 9:00. So there's, there's 10 minutes there between coming into school, excuse me, there's 15 minutes there before, between coming into school and starting class as opposed to the current 10. We think we, you know, we think we have a way to address that. There were concerns raised about preparation time. And as somebody else mentioned, whenever you change, people are going to have to adjust. And that will be an adjustment. But again, without painting our faculty with a broad brush, my sense is that more of the negative feedback came from our elementary, from some members of our elementary staff. Again, I don't want to paint them all with the same broad brush. I think by and large, most of the middle school, high school teachers, and those of you, Board members who attended some of the meetings we had with, with the staff, the secondary teachers were more, yeah, this is a good idea, or why not try it? It could lead to an improvement. So there's, they could think of no reason to say, no, this is something we shouldn't do. So again, I'm not sure if I answered your question. I'm trying to, not to paint everybody with the same brush, but that's where the commentary, the feedback from our staff has come from. In terms of the transportation question that you asked, we think we have studied that. Mr. Bernard has done most of the work on the transportation piece, as that's part of his day-to-day job. And we think that we can make adjustments to the transportation for September that will allow us to get our kids here by 7:45, which is when the buses would arrive in order for an 8 o'clock first-period start, somewhere in that zone, without picking kids up at 5 o'clock in the morning. We don't, we don't think that's, you know, it's not like we're going to make up a half an hour on the one end, but we're going to lose it because of the transportation. We think that we'll be able to, to run at least, on at least a schedule comparable to this year, if not better. We're going to have to make some adjustments to the schedule. But we think we can make it happen. We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be bringing this proposition to the Board if we thought that we couldn't make all of these pieces work. Based on the research that we've done and our experience this year, we think we can make it happen the way we've outlined it. That's one of the reasons we're doing it as a pilot. There's some things you don't know until you actually put it out there. We think it'll work, but we'll see. And that's what we're asking the Board, the full Board, for the opportunity to give it a try and see how it works out.
Just to piggyback on that survey information, the original survey, there was a big shift with the teachers. They went from 42% negative to, I think it was 26% in the other survey, the second survey. You know, originally, we were looking at 20 minutes later at Chancellor, and that was a big concern for a lot of the staff at Chancellor because that was pushing the day too late for parents and teachers. So I think part of that change is when we moved it to five minutes. And some of the other questions, the comments that came from the staff had to do with, similar to the, to parents, you know, was the 30 minutes enough? And are our students just going to stay up later? So those are the comments that I, that I remember going through.
All right, other questions?
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Savalainen, and I'm a parent, a sister, and live in Reinbeck. And as most of you probably know, I'm a huge proponent of this proposal. And I just want to say, I think you've done a really outstanding job with transparency, with communication, with thoughtful planning, and working with very difficult combination of opposing interests and to try to come up with a good solution. So I just want to thank you. I did not think it would happen this fast, and I'm hopeful that it's going to happen. I know it's, you still have to, you know, both, but, but it sounds very promising, and I'm just really impressed, and I wanted to say thank you.
All right, other questions or comments?
Julia Goldman, I've spoken on this topic to this Board before, and I think everyone knows where I'm coming from. I just had an interpretive idea about the second student survey that might be interesting to consider. I'm basing it, I'm comparing the results of the survey with conversations that I've had with the 0.75% of the high school student body that are my kids. And some of their friends who I've, who I've talked to, so this is very informal, ad hoc. But I think in the second survey, I think there's a sense among some of the students of like, why are you guys still talking about this? It's a no-brainer. Just, and especially the pilot piece, comments that I've heard from my kids and some of their friends are, well, why don't we just try, like, why don't we just try it for a year? Like, what's the problem? Like, what's the problem? If it doesn't work, we'll do something else." So, I think there may have been some apathy about engaging in, in the second survey. And I think some of the, um, uh, negative opinion that was expressed in the second survey might reflect some disappointment that some of the students feel that a half an hour isn't enough. Um, not that they're opposed to a later start time, but that eight o'clock still feels awfully early. And I have a admittedly biased perspective, because all the talk in my house is about the incontrovertible evidence that teenagers have circadian rhythms that, uh, make it more effective for them to go to bed later and get up later. Um, but I just thought that my perspective on that data might be, might be helpful.
It is, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Other questions or comments?
Hi, um, my name's Michael Van, uh, from the Corners. I, most of you have heard of the team before. And I would like to thank you for asking a lot of the questions and concerns that I had had in the last meeting. I think there was a lot of information that was not known, uh, the last week. But I did have a couple of questions about the after-school programs and, um, the tutoring that it's, we're showing the chart, it was only a, it was a 10-minute shift, and, and the amount of time is still going to remain the same. But I see almost a 20 minutes, 19-minute difference in the end time of the school. So, school's going to end 19 minutes later than it does now, but yet we're still going to be able to have the same. And I only say that because my son benefits from being in a club after school. He really enjoys being a tutor. And, you know, I would hate to see it at that cut, at that time be cut down. I know the chart says it's not. I just don't see how it can with a 19-minute change, but we're only reflecting, you know, a 10-minute shift in, in the time that the bus leaves from here. Uh, one of my other questions was, one of the big focuses seems to be on tardiness and have, does the district know what the overall reason is for tardiness? Do we, are the students required, or parents required to say why their student is tardy? Do we already know what the reason is for them? And, or, if one of those reasons is, as I addressed before, a lack of supervision, the parents leave before the child, I, I just see if that's one of the reasons that, that's not going to improve by having the student leave a half an hour later than they do already. I don't know if the district has a handle on why tardiness is, it's not an issue for me, so I can't speak. You know, I make sure my kids are here. But I just wanted to see if there was, if that was looked into at all. And is the 30-minute, or maybe it has, I've been trying to stay up on the emails, has the 30-minute study been put out yet to, available to us to see? Because the ones that I saw were always in the beginning where it showed the two-hour shift. I think one of them showed a one hour, but I, I'd asked last time if the 30-minute one could be made available, just so that we see what, what kind of benefit we're looking for. Because I, I know that test scores, we're not really expecting a major jump there. Um, I know we're expecting maybe it to help a percentage. I don't know how, how small or big that percentage is. Um, and the, the conversations that the board had with Glenn's Falls and their shift, is their shift 30 minutes, or is their shift larger than 30? And, you know, so are we talking apples and apples? Or...
Can I just, one thing I can say is I think it'd be great to actually be able to share that material online. I think that's a wonderful suggestion. So, um, particularly the study, the Rhode Island study that we were referencing early in the presentation, make that link available. And I don't know, Joe, is it possible to get the Glenn, we could put some information about the Glenn's Falls?
Yeah, we'll have to see what we have available to us about the Glenn's Falls. And the Glenn's Falls situation, to be honest with you, maybe one of my colleagues remembers exactly how much they shifted their time. But to be, to be fair, uh, the Glenn's Falls situation was, uh, was different in a lot of very fundamental ways. For example, they don't bus their students. It's a small city school district. They all ride public transportation. So, the whole transportation issue is, wasn't a factor for them. Uh, but Deb, do any of you guys remember what the, what the start time pushback was on Glenn's Falls?
I would want to say an hour.
Yeah.
Right. So, they were going to start at 8:30.
It wasn't a two hour or anything like that. But it wasn't that long, but...
More than a half an hour, certainly.
Yeah, certainly was.
But not an hour and a half or, or two hours. It was closer to, to an hour, I believe. Uh, you know, I, I would only make the point that, um, that this proposal, while, uh, in the opinion of the committee, based on all this work we've been doing, is the, the best of the five options, I don't think anybody here is saying it's a perfect option. And the board gave us some constraints relative to it being cost-neutral and maintaining programs. So, we were working through some pretty tight parameters, and our feeling, and it'll be up to the full board to, to see if they agree or not in, in two weeks when they vote this, but the feeling in the subcommittee was that, uh, we get, uh, we get the benefit of a half an hour. Again, would it be better if it was an hour, or an hour and a half, or two hours? Yeah. But we get a half an hour later start time, maintain our programs, uh, we do pretty much all the things that the board said they wanted to see in the proposal. But I mean, I think any, for any of us to sit here and say, "Yes, it's ideal in every way, shape, or form," we, it isn't. None of these plans are perfect. They all have, you know, pros and cons. We think this has the most bang for no additional buck. And I, that, that's the only way I can say it at this point. But anybody else can jump in there?
Yes. I wasn't on this, I haven't been on this committee, uh, but your issue that you asked about tardiness, um, the curriculum Subcommittee of the Board has sort of addressed that issue over years, sort of what can we do about that? Um, Joe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that, um, you know, a percentage of that, a significant number of the tardies are not students who would you, who have driver's license necessarily. So, one of the analysis is that parents, some, some of the lateness is parents dropping off kids. Just to your point of, are kids unsupervised and coming in late? There's, I mean, I don't know that we actually have those numbers right in front of us, but I think that's, that's...
That's the worst, I mean, that the parents are willing to drive them in later with, unless there's...
And we don't know. And I don't, you know, I certainly don't want to, like, it's hard to know people's individual situations in any way at all, but, um, just...
This doesn't, I, I think...
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Doesn't affect me whether they come, but, you know, I'm not, I don't have a situation where this change is going to affect my job or getting my kids here. I just, and, and I'm all for change. I just want change that's driven by some kind of statistics. And if all the statistics that we were shown initially were the two-hour and one-hour jump, and nothing with the half an hour, then a half an hour seems pretty insignificant. So, I just, I would like to see change for a reason, and not just to be the first ones to make change.
And it sounds like there's an article that we can make available?
Yeah, that, that would be...
The 30-minute study, yeah.
Yes. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, we'll get that, we'll get that out on the website.
Oh, and Diane?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, this will be available, and, uh, as you're probably aware, we're recording, we're recording all of this. In a couple of days, that'll be posted on the website as well.
Diane?
I was just going to tackle the after-school club. What time for that? If I, and, correct me if I'm wrong. Right now, school ends at 2:15, and the clubs don't start until 2:30. So, there's kind of like 15 minutes for kids to get there and start that. Um, under the proposal, school would end at 2:35, and clubs would start at 2:40. So, clubs would be expected to start right away. So, that's where you make up that difference. There just wouldn't be that kind of time to hang around, get ready for the club. The same amount of time is for kids to pretty much get on the bus. They'd have, the other kids would have time to get to their, their clubs and start. That's that 10-minute difference, is there?
All right. Does anyone else have a question or comment?
Thank you. Uh, so, you all know me. I'm Gabe Muhud. I live here in Reinbeck. I am a semi-regular or regular at Board of Education. I'm trying to measure that. Um, I'd just like to say, um, I believe in a lot of what Ms. Goldman said earlier tonight. Um, I think in my personal relationships with a lot of students, I think there is overwhelming support for this measure. Uh, I think, again, there was a little bit of disappointment that, uh, the measure was only 30 minutes, but I think by, by and large, uh, most people support any increase in sleep. I think that the lower numbers that people saw in the second survey was because of the fact that it was, um, given at the, uh, survey taker's discretion to take. Um, I think if you surveyed the entire population, that those numbers would probably better reflect the first survey. And even with, uh, any number of factors, like seniors being annoyed, that doesn't affect them. I can tell you some of my friends that came to classes saying, "No," because they were annoyed that they didn't get to start later. Uh, I can also tell you that a bunch of people are like, "I didn't even know there was a second survey. I don't check my school email." Um, so I think that, uh, to keep in mind for next year, when you do reevaluate, if the motion passes, and if you do end up adopting a later start time, that if you want to conduct the second survey to see how it has affected the students, um, and you want student and parent input, then, uh, you should have that survey be done in class, um, or in a structured time, so you get more responses that probably better reflect the views of the population. Um, yep, that's it. Uh, I support this measure. Thank you.
I just saw a hand up in the back.
Well, um, I'm Noah again. And, uh, I just wanted to add on something that I sort of briefly mentioned, but I heard other people talking a little bit about, um, 30 minutes not necessarily being enough time. And of course, I would love more, but, um, I feel like, well, I was, first, I'll start with, um, in, in one of our classes, we have to do this thing called a current event, where we find articles for one of our classes and write all about the article. It's usually asked to be relevant. And one of the articles that I was reading, uh, showed that just reducing 5% of your body weight could, um, be hugely, um, really, really, really good for your health, reduces all sorts of risks. And, um, I thought that, not that it's the same thing, but that it can apply. It's something that seems really easy and doesn't even seem like it would do much, but, but actually did a huge amount, and studies showed that. And I feel like, um, this would be something that would align with that, and that such a small change can really do a lot and would really be noticeable. And I think a lot of kids, maybe even ones who were against it, would change their mind after they realize how much better they feel during the day, just from 30 minutes of change.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I, I have a, a comment that I received, uh, just before I came in here, and Joe has blessed this rather unorthodox, uh, way of making a statement at a board meeting, but, uh, this is from Kyla Hart, who is a parent of a seventh grader and a fourth grader. And I'll, I'll email this to all of you guys, so you've got it. "It's not always easy to wake up at 5:55 and get Lulu on the bus at 6:44, but ultimately, I think the discipline of rising early is more positive than negative. However, I keep coming back to the fact that this is a pilot program. Yes, change is difficult, but as an educational body, don't we teach our children to explore, experiment, and try new things? The essence of a pilot program is to try something new. Based on all the research that's been presented and the possible positive outcomes, I urge the Board of Education to vote yes on the new start time. We would be doing our district and community a disservice not to embrace change and try this pilot program." So, I'll send this to you guys.
I just want to thank the people who came out tonight, particularly people who've spoken with us before and who have taken the time to think deeply and to formulate questions, questions that push us to think about what is really motivating any kind of proposal that would ultimately be put before this board for action. And, um, that models something incredibly powerful for, you know, how we, uh, use facts and information to inform decision-making. I, I really am so pleased that students in particular have taken the time to follow this issue, to come in and weigh in on it. And, uh, we particularly appreciate the feedback we get from the students about how better to consult with students to get their perspective moving forward, particularly if we are in a situation of trying to measure what a pilot program would look like and how effective it is. So, um, that is extremely important. And, and I guess the last thing I want to say is we prepared, actually Laura prepared this FAQ sheet, which I hope we're going to put on the website along with this presentation. And I urge everyone to take a look at it, particularly if you're having conversations with folks, and certain questions we know kind of keep coming up because we saw them in the surveys. So, we tried to actually engage with some of those most frequently asked questions here, but I did want to actually read just one of them, because it strikes me that some questions that are still sort of in our minds about what to do about making sure that kids get enough sleep, and really the larger picture about health and wellness of our students, it strikes me that this is just the tip of the iceberg in terms of thinking about a policy, uh, around school start time. One of the questions that we've been asked a lot is, "Isn't it, isn't it the parent's responsibility to ensure that kids get enough sleep?" Changing the time will only mean they'll stay up later. And, and kids themselves have, have, you know, sometimes said that to us. And the answer, I think, that we came up with, and we hope we're all going to continue talking about as a community, is that the board regards any such change, if it were adopted, as only a first step, an important first step, but a first step that will encourage students and families to think about cultivating healthful sleep habits. We can do this through efforts both in the school, but obviously, equally importantly or more importantly, in the home. And it is clear to us that this is a first step. Taking action's important, but recognizing that that step is just one step, not taking that step, it seems to, to at least us at this point, is to sort of suggest we can't impact those kinds of conversations, and we hope that we can impact them, and that this can be an opportunity for the Health and Wellness Committee and for many, many more productive conversations about how sleep habits and the support of sleep habits is important to student life in their school, in their school world, and with each other, and with their teachers, moving forward.
Lisa?
Um, I, I just want to touch very briefly, because I know we're, it's getting late, on the comment that, um, you made in the back about, um, about the, how the busing change will affect the change that's being proposed. And, um, I, I just want to say that because we all know that in the early part of the year, there was a certain amount of ferment around, um, the bus schedule and the problems that the district was experiencing with that, that one thing that we as a district experienced was a certain loss of trust and confidence by the community in the district, because whereas in the past, the buses had run pretty much exactly the way they were supposed to, and, you know, with the exception of the occasional hiccup, most people were pretty comfortable and satisfied with the way that the busing program worked. The early part of this year was a period where a lot of people had a lot of complaints, some quite serious complaints about the way the bus program was working. And, um, to now be proposing something that would have some impact, some change on how the bus, the buses will run, is something that gives rise to legitimate concerns that I think still continue to arise out of a lingering sense of anxiety or distrust that things will work out right. And I, I just want to say that this is something that we on the board have taken very seriously, that we've talked at considerable length about both in board meetings and in committee meetings, um, and that, um, the district is not saying to the community, "Just trust us, everything will work out." If this proposal is approved, the board is going to be putting the, the logistical issues at the forefront for the next several months until the next school year starts and the pilot program begins, in terms of how this is going to work in very practical terms. The buses are going to be a key component in those discussions. And, um, we will keep the community informed. And we will keep the community informed as we work through these issues. So we want everybody, by the time we start this program, to feel as though we're ready to meet these challenges. Now, can I say there will be no hiccups and nobody will have the slightest concern? Of course not. Can never say that. But what I can say is that everything that we can do to get ready for this will be done, that the community will know what we're doing and that we will take any hiccups or things that are more than hiccups, if they happen, extremely seriously and deal with them to the best of our ability. And hopefully, as this works through and as the pilot program starts, the community will start to feel a greater sense of trust and confidence because you see that things that were problematic at one point are no longer problematic.
All right, any other questions or comments? Well, seeing none, we'll close this part of the meeting. I suggest we take a five-minute break and then we'll start the regular meeting. Thank you, everyone, for coming.